Excuse me, it's six o'clock. Call to order, the Board of Trustees meeting for tonight. Before we move into the consent agenda, though, I do have a personal statement I would like to read. Since this is, there is precedence of this, I would hope that the board gives me the respect to read it. When I joined the Library Board of Trustees in 2022, I did it because I love books, I love reading. I have, since I was a young girl, reading Charlotte's Web in kindergarten and Franklin Elementary School, John Grisham in high school. In college, my mom laughed that she knew it was break, because I would have only have time to devour books in the summer or over winter break, so she would leave a stack in my room that she had finished while I was away at school. I love that books take you places you've never been and introduce you to people you would have never otherwise met. Books tell you history, both the good and the bad. Books give you an escape. The library is a place you can find any of those things. I wanted to make sure the Christian County Library continued to be a place where anyone of any background, any religion, any ethnicity, any age, any income level could come and find what they wanted, maybe even what they needed. Many people in our community can't afford to go to Barnes &amp; Noble or even a book resale shop to purchase books. They need the library to continue their love of reading or even their education. Their children need the library to grow a love of reading, and it should not be up to us what books someone else's child can read. I was going to save the following segment, but I am going to continue by reading it now. May 10, 1933, thousands of books were burned on the streets of Germany. The reason behind the burning of these books, the authors were Jewish, or gay, or American. German Minister of Public Enlightenment and Propaganda Joseph Goebbels stated, "The era of extreme Jewish intellectualism is now at an end. The future German man will not just be a man of books, but a man of character." Here we are, 91 years later, and censorship of ideas different from our own is a battle we are still waging. Take out the word Jewish and replace it with LGBTQ, gay, homosexual, et cetera, and replace German with American. And it is a summary of many of the comments we have heard regarding censorship of books in this very library. The old adage, "If we do not learn from history, it is bound to repeat itself," brings loud and true today. Labels are stigmatizing and labels are censorship. There is no way around it. In Nazi Germany, my ancestors wore yellow stars on their chest and arms labels. Or to put it in literary examples, in The Scarlet Letter, Hester Prynne walked around with a giant A on her neck, a label. One fiction, one entirely real, both of these situations allowed for people to know these were groups or a person they should avoid. They labeled them as bad. We should not and cannot label children. By labeling books that include or explain LGBTQIA ideas, we are labeling the children who see themselves in these books as bad, as wrong, as someone who should be an other. A few speakers have mentioned a rise in suicide attempts or deaths by suicide in the LGBTQIA youth community. You're right, those numbers are up, but not for the reasons you've touted. They are not up because they read about themselves in books. They are not up because a book made them realize they were not the only ones with these very real and sometimes very scary feelings. They are up because people make them feel less than, like they are wrong, per research by the Trevor Project and the American Psychological Association. New York City Health states being LGBTQ alone does not put a young person at higher risk for suicide. The discrimination, rejection, fear, and harassment that may come with being LGBTQ in an unsupportive environment are what increase the risk. As a community, we must stop stigmatizing, we must support. The library is for everyone. We don't have to read the same books, that's the beauty of it. The library is also not a babysitter or a parent for our children. When I bring my children to the library, I let them browse. If they find something they find interesting, I also read the description. If I am concerned, I check out commonsensemedia.org. I do the same thing when there are movies they want to watch. I've told my kids no on both movies and books. Let's be honest, if there is a label on the book that they felt meant that they weren't supposed to read it, guess which one most kids are going to go to head to first? I've said it before, and I will say it again, to quote Sam Bishop, "Books are mirrors when readers see their own lives reflected in the pages. Books are windows when they allow readers to view lives and stories that are different from their own. Books become sliding glass doors when readers feel transported into the world of the story and when they feel empathy for the characters." Empathy, that word resonates the loudest with me right now. A little more empathy to try and understand those around us, rather than labeling as other or less than. Labeling, book banning, book burning, these are all forms of censorship. Our community, our county, is better than that. To conclude, my family is one of the reasons I took on this position, so my sons could see the importance of libraries. Lately, I have not hidden a single thing said in these meetings from them. They ask, and I give them full answers. Many times, they have asked to come and speak, but I have not allowed them to simply forget the fact that I didn't want what was said in here about me, to me, to be a weight they should have to carry. It is much easier for me to explain that to them than for them to hear it, the hatred coming from the mouths of people they share a community with. Unfortunately, since the recent appointment of our newest trustee, they are starting to feel that weight. I am being pulled into more closed sessions in the last three months than I had in the previous two years. My mental health is declining, and my attention is pulled away because of mundane and unnecessary emails at all times of the day and evenings. My time with my family is my most precious asset. Many in here preach about the importance of family values, yet my time with my family is not valued. Lastly, our library staff. Renee and her team are top-notch. It seems there is some misunderstanding of who she reports to, so let me clear that up. Just because you, the public, say something in a meeting does not require Renee or her team to act on it. Renee answers to the board, who speaks as one voice. Therefore, unless a vote is made for Renee to take a specific action, she does not need to do anything. So complaining every week about the same concerns and admonishing Renee online are extremely unnecessary. I will continuously defend Renee and her team on the way they have handled the abuse and ridicule the public has put upon them. Many of you would not handle it with as much professionalism as they have. Maybe some of you should check out books on bullying while you're here. It is therefore with a heavy heart that I formally submitted my resignation from the Christian County Library Board of Trustees effective...
Per the bylaws, electing a president pro temp would be appropriate for this meeting, and then we can put an election on next month's agenda for the big hearing.
So I make a motion that we elect a president pro temp. I nominate Echo Alexander.
We have a motion on the floor, any discussion?
It's customary for you to agree, do you want to do it?
Sure, I will agree to the nomination, thank you, John. Any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Nein.
Hearing two ayes, the motion carries. All right. So, starting with our consent agenda, we have our minutes from both the special open session and the minutes of the open meeting from September. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, a call to a vote. Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we will move into our administrative highlights.
I've asked Nicholas Holliday, our Director of Communications and Community Engagement, to give an update on our Patron Insights survey. I've asked him to do this about this time every year with some of the market research that we give.
Okay. My name is Nicholas, and I am the Director of Community Engagement. I oversee the work of the Communications and Average Departments. Like Renee says, this is my third October in a row to share the data from our library's marketing engagement. So I hope that you like the numbers. Broadly, our engagement is measured by both qualitative and quantitative data, gathered formally and informally. Some are required for the state, such as door count, circulation, usage, program attendance, and our collection. Others not required, but do help the library make decisions, which is mostly what we're going to be talking about tonight. Since 2017, we've used a product called Savanna by Orange Boy. Many libraries use this as a tool to measure the impact of a library and the impact it has on the community. This customer analytical software pulls from the census and library usage and aid in creating and implementing target emailing. The interface allows us to easily review district-wide activity, engagements, usage trends, and automatically packages together quarterly specifics metrics such as household market penetration, new cardholder retention, gain-loss index, and net promoter scores. Each of these KPIs, key performance indicators, are utilized by professional marketing companies to measure progress and impact. For this year, we have data from quarters one and quarters two, which is January through May. Quarter three, June through August, has not been released yet. So we're going to start with household market penetration. It's up on the slide, and it's also in your packet. It's a little easier to see up on the slide. This metric measures the percentage of active households. Active household is defined as one active library card in a household. And it's for the entire service area. For us, it's the entire Christian County. The larger the percentage, the broader the library's reach. So for quarter two, that's 10,357 active households divided by the total number of households in the county, which is about 34,242, giving us a 30% penetration rate. In other words, one out of every three households actively uses the library. It represents a growth of 221 households from quarter one up to 2024. A good market penetration rate for any consumer product is between 10% to 20%. So with those metrics, we are in the good range as far as marketing standards. However, a public library is not a for-profit company, so it's best to measure it compared to other libraries. Savanna automatically takes our household market penetration and compares it to other ones, excuse me, to other libraries. There are over 200 total libraries that use Savanna. Roughly 75 of those have the same budget range, and roughly 75 have the same population size. Christian County Library on this graph is represented by an orange bar. When compared to library, all libraries in Savanna, which is the red bar, we have a, we're, excuse me, we're 30%, all libraries in Savanna is 29%. When compared with those with similar budgets, which is the dark green bar, we are 28, we're 30%, and libraries with similar budget sizes are at 28%, and we're on par with the same population size, which is the teal bar. Same colors for all the graphs going forward. The next one is new cardholder retention. Adding new cardholders is great, but holding on to them is even better. Nationally, all libraries experience a dip in new cardholder activity after their first year. The new cardholder retention measures the success rate of keeping them active. The formula is dividing the number of new cardholders that are still active by the total number of cards made before the end of the quarter. For this, it is 2,134 divided by 3,822, giving CCL a 56% retention rate. Similar to market penetration, the higher the percentage rate, the higher our retention is. Our retention compared to other libraries is very good. We lead the pack among libraries of similar budget, similar size, and all libraries that use Savanna. The next one is game-loss index. Another way to view cardholder retention is with the game-loss. This metric highlights if we are gaining more active users or losing more inactive users. Inactive means defined that a patron did not use their card in the last 12 months, calculated by subtracting active cardholders, both new and those that renewed, from cardholders that went inactive, and then dividing by the smaller of the two groups. 1,665 minus 1,157 divided by that makes it a positive 44%. On the whole, we won a positive number, meaning that we gained more patrons than went inactive. But if there's a quarter with a loss, it's not necessarily a negative when it comes to game-loss. Each quarter's total reflects the time of the year. So when there's months with less foot traffic, then we would have not as high a game. We saw huge swings in 2020 and 2021, when the library was closed, and then once again when it opened, and when we introduced in-person programming again. That being said, as you can see on the graph, when comparing our percentages against other libraries, our gain for this quarter, quarter two, 2024, is greater across the board. Okay, next one is active cardholders. Rounding out cardholder retention are the active cardholder numbers. There's no real formula for this KPI. It's simply an ever-changing running total of the number of cars that have been used within the last 12 months. Green line indicates households, and orange indicates individual cardholders. At the end of quarter two, 2024, we had 18,535 individual cardholders, active cardholders, and 11,186 active households. From quarter one, 2024, to quarter two, 2024, that's a gain of 805 individual cards and 298 households. So you just keep here. So for some context, before we jump to the next metric, I'm just going to sum it up. Every graph tells a part of a larger story. We still have residual impacts from 2020, but we are getting back to those pre-COVID numbers, specifically with event attendance and door counts, which are not part of here, but Renee shared with you before. Those stats, we did talk about it, staff training that happened last week. What's noticeably different now is the retention of active cardholders. Under the leadership and guidance of Renee, active cardholders are the highest it's been in five years. Since she's been the Executive Director, each of these KPIs has seen steady growth and healthy growth. Little changes here and there over time start to add up. All these graphs represent that. Okay? So next, for NPS. Now, it's a lot of quantitative data, let's move to a mixed method approach. The next metric is a classic marketing tool used by hundreds of thousands of companies to understand a user's experience, and it's called the Net Promoter Score. It's a short survey asking how likely somebody is to recommend the library to others, scored on a Likert scale of zero to 10. We send this survey out every week, once randomly to patrons who have provided an email address. Responders are put into one of three groups. Promoters score nine or 10. Passes, a score seven or eight. And detractors, which is zero through six. To get an NPS score, calculate by subtracting the percentage of detractors from the percentage of promoters. That score will normally fall, will pass to fall, between a negative 100 and a positive 100. Higher scores are more desirable. So below zero means bad. Above zero is good. Above 20 is favorable. Above 50 is excellent, and above 80 is world-class. The best way to compare scores is among companies within the same industry. For example, an average NPS score for healthcare falls in the high 30s. Fast food chains, about the mid-20s. Car rental companies, unsurprisingly, are single digits. Internet cable services are negative numbers consistently. The average score for government services is 16 to 20. Nationally, libraries fall somewhere in the mid-50s. The average of all libraries using an NPS score collected by Savanna is 85. We've been sending out surveys for three years. After the first year, our NPS score was an 82. The second year, it was an 84, and for this year, from September 1, it's a 92. In marketing terms, Christian County Library has received world-class scores for the past three years. All the NPS surveys that are sent and recorded are tabulated automatically by Savanna. I don't touch any of the scores. The results are sent to us, packaged, and one of those packages comes with a nice feature such as a Word Cloud. This is pulled from patron feedback. Looking at the Word Cloud, we can extrapolate why patrons scored the way they did. The size of a word reflects the importance and how often it appears in the quality of data. The three largest words, friendly, helpful, and staff. That is what is referenced most in the responses. We know that all people are not all satisfied with the library. Not a perfect 100 score. And honestly, there are no organizations that will ever satisfy every customer and every user. Of the 635 completed surveys that were sent countywide, we had 25 individuals that gave the library score between 1 and 6. That's 3.9% of the responses were detractors. So wrapping it all up, this data that we collect along with others tells a story. The scores and numbers represent library staff, circulation of materials, interactions with the community, customer service, our in-person programs, and partnerships. It's the result of library staff, the people that are here every day working the desks, fulfilling the library's mission. Taking it all in and examining this data, we can confidently say that the majority of Christian County community is more than pleased with the services, collection, and the way the library fulfills its promise. And most importantly, when our community thinks about the Christian County Library, the first thing that comes to mind is our helpful and friendly staff. That's what I got. Any questions?
Tell me, I'm sure you said this, but tell me again, who do the surveys get sent to? Is it cardholders or...?
They are all cardholders that have provided an email.
Okay.
If you don't have an email with us, which you don't have to, you wouldn't do the survey.
Okay.
And it's randomly sent out every week. Other questions?
May I make a comment on staff while we're at it? I'd like to give a shout-out. This was in the Christian County Headliner on October 16. We had a program about this a few months ago about the gravestone cleaning project that we've been doing. And Whit Gillan Waters and Charlie Evans from the Sparta branch received an Excellence in Genealogy and Local History Award. So that was kind of neat about, you know, a project that they starred with the headstone cleaning, and very grateful for the headliner to record that award. And congratulations.
And we did one other award in that program.
It's been nationally recognized.
Yeah, it's a good thing, we've got some good stuff going.
All right, with that, we will move into public comments. So if you were signed up for a public comment, we have them in the order at which you signed up. So I'm going to go ahead and call the name, and I'll try and give a heads-up for the next person who's in line. Thank you, Tori, for sharing our public comment policy there as well, so.
How do you want them to do handouts if they have them?
Is it easiest to receive them at the start? Does that work the best to not interrupt speaker time?
It helps me so I can follow along with what they're saying.
I agree. If there's 13 people that have signed up to speak, if you do have a handout that you would like to hand to the board, I would ask that you come forward with that handout at this time, so that way we can use our speaker time as efficiently as possible, so. And if you haven't already, maybe put your name at the top. If not, we can put your name at the top. So we have fingers on our...
Thanks, Gretchen.
Thank you for taking the time to kind of... Thank you. Thank you. Good job, name on it, little star. Thank you. Amy?
Oh, thank you, Gretchen, Noah, actually. No, your name, thank you.
All right, so thank you for doing that. Our first speaker is Laura, and our second speaker is Amy, so if you want to be ready to speak. Thank you, Tori.
Okay, I was not here last month as I had a trip to Florida planned, which happened during Helena. That was fun. But I am wanting to again cover what this small group of extremists are doing under Project 2025, which is plan to ban books and dummy down our community. We just heard a very good report, let's see how good it is after they decide to fire the people inside our library. At my last educational talk, I had a handout that studies show that children are not at risk for sexual abuse by homosexuals. Studies show that they were unlikely to have been molested by identifiable gay or lesbian people. And tonight is my first example presenting the sexual offenders and characteristics of child abusers. This study was in 2021, and they were white heterosexual males and females. 57.5% were white. 76.6% of offenders in cases involving production of child pornography were white. 53.3% of offenders in cases involving travel for prohibited sexual contact were white. Their average age was 38 years, and 95.4% were United States citizens. 60% of perpetrators are non-relative acquaintances, but 30% of those who sexually abused children are relatives of the child, fathers, uncles, or cousins. I even have example of heads of churches who have groomed and sexually abused children and women. Those who are on the receiving end of sexual assault in their lifetime are the transgenders and non-binary persons, the people you are attacking. On another note, I also recently received from the Secretary of State sex offender information that they have put out. There is a lot of white dudes on this list, I have pages and pages, white dudes on this list, and they look pretty straight, heterosexual to me. I really want to, so this is where your attention should be drawn to if you directly want to really help your community, is to white heterosexual males and white females. None of them appear to be identifiably gay or lesbian persons. I also recently came across a brochure from a Springfield called Good Dads. Don't know anything about this group, but their mission is to inspire resource and encourage all fathers to be more involved in the lives of their children. It takes more than just sperm donation to be a father of a developing human being.
Thank you, Mark.
Do you guys have a list of the banned books that you guys have banned? I'd like a copy of that list if you have that, or if you can get it to me. Okay.
All right, Amy, you're up, and then Eilena, you're up next.
Hi, my name's Amy Hoekstra. I'm here this evening to sing the praises of Christian County Library's Executive Director, Renee Brummett. I first met Renee when I was serving on NICS's city council, and I invited her to speak at a city council meeting regarding all of the lesser-known services offered by our library system. I found Renee to be incredibly competent, professional, personable, and knowledgeable. She gave a wonderful presentation at the city council meeting, and I even learned a thing or two about all of the many benefits offered by CCL. It's not possible to overstate how lucky we are in Christian County to have such a stellar Executive Director at the helm of our libraries. Renee has excellent education and experience, which combined with her passion and dedication, have allowed her to lead our libraries to great success during her tenure here. The bounce-back that has occurred since the pandemic, in terms of event attendance, membership, number of visits, cardholders, et cetera, has been nothing short of phenomenal. Renee has kept a laser focus on serving all of Christian County's almost 90,000 residents by increasing access, innovation, and engagement. Never content with the status quo, she is always looking for ways to serve the community better and to serve as much of the community as possible, making our libraries welcoming and accessible spaces for all who reside here. In short, Renee Brummett is an exemplary Executive Director, and I'm so grateful that we are lucky enough to have her leading our library system with her expertise, passion, and unwavering focus on the mission of public libraries. Thank you, Renee. You are so appreciated in this community, and the great work you do does not go unnoticed. And since I still have more time, I would also like to say what a huge shame it is that the board and that the library system has lost Allison Tugness, and how completely unChristlike it was to applaud her resignation.
Yes, yes.
Eilena, you are up to speak, and Juanita, you are next.
In 2013, after more than 25 years as Director, Mabel Phillips retired from the Christian County Library, leaving the library a warm, comfortable hometown environment. Trips to the library felt more like a trip to visit family. Director Godburst stepped down in 2021, leaving the library a somewhat comfortable experience, still feeling like a visit to family. And at this point in 2024, visiting the library feels like a trip to your creepy uncle's house, the one that you don't want to leave your children alone with. That being said, how have we gotten here over the last 10 years? After Jerry Godburst stepped down as Director in January of 2021, a search for a new Director began. The job listing was extended outside of the Christian County Library and was specifically sent to the ALA to post the job listing, an organization that has openly marked as members. sent to the ALA to post the job listing, an organization that has openly Marxist members. During this time, four out of five trustees either resigned, retired, or died, ushering in a completely inexperienced board. When Renee Brummett was hired in May of 2021, there was a rewrite of the bylaws. It is my understanding that the bylaws establish the roles and responsibilities of the trustees as well as the director, and the director serves at the pleasure of the board, not the other way around. So it's alarming that Director Brummett would in the first two months of her employment rewrite or have the influence on the rewrite of bylaws and ask for a rubber stamp from the inexperienced board of trustees. I've handed you recently sunshine requested email communications between our director and the library's lawyer from July of 2021, as well as the highlighted changes Renee was discussing with him to change. I would like to direct your attention to the last page and find Article 8 titled Scope of Authority. This article did not exist before Renee was hired as director, and it appears to have been written in by her. In Renee's email, she states, "Tori and I proposed a few changes to allow a little more flexibility on a few things." This begs the question, flexibility for whom? How is it okay to show up to your new job and hand your boss your job description, as well as modify theirs, effectively saying, "Here's how you are restricted from managing me"? How can a board effectively manage a director who has insulated herself from oversight by the trustees, the very people who are managing public funds? Article 8 of the bylaws needs reined in, and the board needs to reclaim their oversight of the director. And I'd just like to say also, as far as that NPS survey, I didn't personally receive the survey, and the library has my emails, so I'm not sure who was surveyed with that. So I appreciated that question, but just look out here, look at what just happened with the president, and I'm not sure where those numbers are coming from. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Juanita, you're up to speak, and then Kevin?
Recently, a young man that we know approached us with a dilemma. He's in a college speech class, and in one of his classes, a student spoke on the topic of book banning in public and school libraries. Our young friend listened intently then because he knows us and he knows some of what has been going on at these meetings. He knew that wasn't true about us. He tried to interject a statement of disagreement with the premise of the speech, and he was shocked by the amount of emotion and the visceral reaction displayed by the person speaking. The speaker's insistence that the intent was to ban books and shut down free speech was disturbing. Unsettled and confused by the response to his comment, our young friend decided to come ask us to explain the situation in the library from our point of view. The first thing that we did was to bring out our binder of book reviews and pictures from some of the questionable children's books found in our library system. And we sat down, opened it up, and went through it with him. Watching his response, I remembered sadly how it looked like my first response. Pictures in a children's book of completely naked women with bare breasts and pubic hair showing bathing in a public bath with naked children present. Pictures in a children's book of people in various stages of gender transitioning, complete with surgery scars. Pictures and text in a book placed in the young adult fiction section for ages as young as 12, describing and showing anatomically correct naked bodies and pointing out and giving directions for sexual acts and stimulation of all kinds. This particular book, which according to Booklook's rating is not suitable for minors, also gives detailed instructions how to find and download a sex app. Red-faced and embarrassed by what he had just seen, our young friend was silent for a moment. Then without looking me in the eye, he said, "I see what you mean." And folks, it's as simple as that. These age-inappropriate books have been placed randomly in the kids' sections in this library with no regard and no consideration for the many families who want to come and use the library with their children, but they don't want their kids to come across these books accidentally. We believe that in order to be fair to all tax-paying patrons of the library, there has to be informed consent, a way of identifying and organizing books in the kids' section so that parents can easily and confidently supervise their kids while they're browsing. We've been told by some members of the Board and the American Library Association that these books can't be moved or labeled because it would make certain people in the community feel bad and marginalized. After considerable reflection and thought, this is a conclusion that I have come to on that point. If the people in your community who identify as the misunderstood marginalized victims are working to actively oppress your rights, which is what is going on here, then they are no longer the marginalized misunderstood victims. They've now effectively become the oppressors.
Kevin, you're up to speak, and Cindy Dickens is next.
Last time I was here, I asked how did we get here, and I've thought about that a lot since we met the last time. But anyway, all we've been asking for is that age-inappropriate books and sexually explicit material not be placed in front of our children. It's that simple. We've talked with members of the trustees. We've had conversations in the library, and all these conversations have always hit a dead end, and it's been a hostile conversation. It always winds up there. And we've never tried to force anything on anybody. We're not telling anybody what to do with their kids. We're just wanting to make sure our kids can once again go to the library and experience reading. I always found the library boring. That might be why I've not been as successful as I could have been in life. But you know what? When I went to the library, I was always, I was neat when I saw somebody that liked to read. It always impressed me, somebody that had an insatiable desire to read. And then we got involved in this. But we tried numerous ways to have a rational dialogue about this with both the Board and employees of the library. That effort failed time and time again. Unfortunately, it seems that hostility has not been eliminated yet. You know what? We're getting there, slowly but surely. We now have a majority of trustees that are willing to listen to us and all the citizens of Christian County. Whoever's been resistant to the will of the people of our community has now lost their majority position on the Board. A minority of our trustees have commissioned a lawyer. You know, I'm just going to say, this is part of what I've been trying to figure out how we got here, but I'm going to attempt a description of what I perceive of what's happened. A minority of our trustees have commissioned a lawyer who's paid with our tax dollars to sue a majority of the Board members that represent the majority of us. There's also been a restraining order placed on a majority of our trustees. To me, that's just really confusing. They've used lawfare basically in an attempt to remove our voice from the process that affects our community, our families, and our children. This is not their library. This is the Christian County Library. They are accountable to the citizens of this county, and they're spending taxpayer money for a minority of our Board to sue a majority of itself. I just don't understand how that makes any sense or how that's going to accomplish anything. It's kind of like, I guess the bottom line issue for us is we need to protect our children. The current way our library's been doing things in the past is not a way to manage a taxpayer-funded organization. This whole situation has descended into absurdity. This makes about as much sense as giving a nine-year-old a pack of unfiltered Camel cigarettes to smoke because the child says that he identifies as an adult and he doesn't want to feel marginalized. I don't understand these conversations. I'm just going to say I'm simple, and this logic just kind of defies me. And all I know is we just want our kids to come to the library and not have to look at this garbage.
Cindy, you're up to speak, and Paula, you're up next.
Good evening, Board. My name is Cindy, and I'm a concerned parent. I want to begin by saying thank you to all of you for not only allowing myself to speak, but all of the speakers. I am in favor of labeling books that contain sexually explicit material, but also books that can be considered inappropriate for certain age groups. I want to try and make something very clear to everyone in this room. I, along with the others who are in favor of such an enormous undertaking by the Christian County Library, are not here to single out any one group of people. We are not here to bash, judge, name-call, or cause division in this community. Unfortunately, those who are on the opposite side have done just that. Don't believe me? Go look at their posts on social media and their comments, or this lady in the front who, when that gentleman back there said that she had, your three minutes was up, she turned around and told him to shut up and then flipped him off. The hatred and the vitriol that they do is astonishing. I personally have had personal, I have had personal things against my family that have nothing to do with books. While this is my only, my second meeting here, I am not new to this fight, as I stated in my last speech. That means all children is what we want to protect. However, it doesn't sound or look that way because there are people who have turned this into something it is not, a personal attack on the gay community. This has never been what we were about. We oppose such books as Unpregnant and Big Book of Sex and Consent being freely accessible to young kids as well. These, along with other books, have no gay content, but they are troublesome to us nonetheless. So here's what it boils down to for me, and like all things in my life, simple is best. So here it goes. Let's just get back to what this country has always been about, and that's protecting the most vulnerable. I think we can all agree that our children certainly fall into that category. The next thing that needs to be done is going to be a lot like herding cats, but let's give it a whirl, shall we? We need to put our political differences aside. We need to put our religious differences aside. We need to stop with the name-calling and the personal attacks, and we need to stop with the hate. Let's take a deep breath and bring this back to what it all started as, and that was to protect children from material that is inappropriate. That is it. We will most certainly not agree as to what this might look like, but in the end, my hope is that if you are in this fight, you are doing it for the right reason, to protect children. So again, I'm asking for books to be labeled or stickered to help parents because, let's be honest, the content of all books will not be as obvious in their titles as the one I listed earlier. Thank you.
Paula, you're up to speak. Gretchen, you're up next.
Hello. I'm Paula Bishop, and I am here to speak about the Board. Becca Alexander is unfit for office. She has proven this in a speech several months ago to an anti-library group in Cape Girardeau. She said these things, and I am paraphrasing them because she has since, or someone has since taken down the YouTube video of her speech. One thing she noted was, "We are keeping our director so busy reviewing challenged books, she cannot do her job anymore." Now, that sounds like that activity and its purpose is against what a Board member should And it's wasting taxpayer dollars that you're so concerned about. If, oh, and another thing she said, if we, toward the end of her speech, if we have to bring the library to ruins to get our way, we will. Now, I don't know what her way is, but it doesn't seem to be the best way in order to grow and continue the growth that the library has seen so far. And the county commissioners have a lot, a lot to explain because this is, you know, these people that are on the Board now are probably part of a far-right group who is intending to start with, you know, the labeling of books, the book banning, things like that, until our libraries are no longer bringing people in and teaching people and showing these things. And the thing is, you know, what you guys consider, what some of you consider to be vulgar or unnecessary is, you know, there's a simple thing to do is don't check out the book. Just don't check it out. You know, it's just, it's ridiculous. Yes, it is ridiculous that it has come to this, that you all have been so, can I say, brainwashed on. It's for the children. It's for the children. Well, you know, ruining our libraries that Becca Alexander seems quite willing to do is not in our best interest, in anyone's best interest.
Gretchen, you're up to speak. Chris Barrett, you're next.
So one of the arguments that the American Library Association and its proponents use to push sexually explicit and age-inappropriate books in public libraries is their concocted right to read. It's a twisted interpretation of the First Amendment, which allows the ALA to suggest that minor children have a First Amendment right to read anything regardless of content. Minor children have limited rights and are properly governed by their parents until they reach the age of maturity. Most parents believe that children should not be exposed to books and materials that sexualize and/or indoctrinate them. Freedom to read is not the same as freedom of speech, which is why the ALA is working furiously to codify into law the fake right, freedom to read. Here's the gist of what the ALA believes about the freedom to read. Within the ALA's Library Bill of Rights is the deceptive use of the word "age." Quote, "A person's right to use a library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views. And all people, regardless of origin, age, background, or views, possess a right to privacy and confidentiality." Note, the ALA is mimicking language from our Constitution. Library Bill of Rights is stolen from the Constitution's Bill of Rights. This is the purposeful usurpation of language and the twisting of it to mean something else. Where in the First Amendment does it say that children, or even adults, have the right to read? If that was so, then every parent whose child graduates from a public high school as a functional illiterate should be able to sue the government schools. The ALA is making up rights out of whole cloth in order to carry out a far-left agenda. One of the goals and objectives of the agenda is to control the hearts and minds of your children, hence their bid to codify a right to read without regard to age. Every three-year-old to which they can normalize transgender ideology, every 10-year-old that can be sexualized, every 14-year-old radicalized to support their agenda is another soldier in their war against our culture and our children. The book list that I handed out, and I have copies out there, where am I here? Is just in the last couple of years provided to in our library. There are many, many more books. They're shelved with unfettered availability to children of every age. This is indoctrination. This is grooming, and this is unacceptable. I urge citizens in Christian County to oppose this indoctrination by getting involved.
Chris, you're up to speak, and Jeanette is up next.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Barrett. Let me first tell you, I'm a gay man. Normally, that shouldn't matter, but since some of the controversy over these books relate to LGBT or T issues, I think I have a unique perspective that should be heard by the Board. Unfortunately, certain forces within this library system want to push more than reading. To be fair to them, they probably think they are just being inclusive, and I appreciate that. But what is really going on here amounts to a weird kind of clumsy attempt at indoctrination. One book that seems to be a favorite of the inclusiveness crowd is All Boys Aren't Blue, and this book can be found here in the NICS's library. Supposedly, this is a book that is appropriate for gay and lesbian youth. According to All Boys Aren't Blue, this is what gay youth supposedly need to know. The book starts off with a discussion of gender and how the reality of a person's sex is irrelevant. This is offensive to gay people because homosexuality itself is about the reality of sex. This book presents an incestuous relationship between two male characters as normal. It graphically describes sexual relationships and gives details on what sex is according to the author's opinion. It embraces calling gay people queer, which is a slur embraced by trans rights activists and their supporters. Books like these are not inclusive. They are insulting to us as gay people. It assumes that we are somehow so oppressed that we need guidance on how to be gay. Evidently, we're so dumb, we can't even figure out the basics of sex. Again, it also assumes that being gay must require you to learn about gender ideology. When I was a young gay person, you know what I was looking for? I just wanted to know how to talk to my family about my feelings. I did find books like that in my local library, and that was great, but they weren't graphic. They weren't condescending like All Boys Aren't Blue or this book. They weren't condescending like All Boys Aren't Blue, or This Book is Gay, and they certainly never included a conversation about transgenderism, which has absolutely nothing to do with being gay. I think what's most disturbing about some of these books marketed to gay and lesbian youth is that now they all push gender ideology on gay people. This truly concerns me, because gender ideology is particularly harmful to gay people. Here's one thing that you should know about. Gay youth go through a lot when they grow up, often weird, gender nonconforming. When I was a kid, I liked to play with Barbie dolls and dress up in pretty clothes. According to modern gender ideologues, I would be a candidate for so-called gender-affirming care. They would tell me that I might have actually been a girl. Nothing can be further affirmed than truth. I am a man, and I'm glad I grew up to be a man. I'm thankful gender ideology wasn't pushed down my throat. Gender ideology through these books are endorsing what amounts... Guys, I...
Finish what you were saying, please.
Okay, all right. Gender ideology through these books are endorsing what amounts to a new form of gay conversions therapy. These books encourage kids to reconsider their gender identity, and when it comes to gay people, this sort of supposed inclusivity amounts to a new form of conversion therapy. As I said, that wasn't okay in the past, and this new progressive and woke form of conversion therapy isn't okay either. Here's one last thing that you may have not considered, and I'll finish up real quick. As a child sexual abuse survivor myself, I was introduced to sex at five years old. I was violated time and time again. For me, it was a family member. Many days, I still wish I could totally wipe those memories from my mind, but I can't. I was exposed to something my young mind was not ready to handle, and I have to deal with that my whole life. I hope that people in favor of these books realize they may be re-traumatizing kids like me. So what should be done about this? Honestly, labeling books as LGBTQ is not something that I'm not particularly in favor of. I think there's lots of books in this library that are probably inappropriate for kids, and I think that the simple explanation is to simply label a book as sexually explicit and make sure that a parent can check it out. To the people that agree with me, keep up the good fight. Remember, you are the parents and family members who actually care about these kids far more than any library board member ever will. To put it simply, children are worth fighting for.
Jeanette, you're up to speak. Reggie, you're up to speak next.
Okay, my name is Jeanette Johns, and I want to say that I fully support the library's plan. And I'm going to change topics for today to Mobius, okay? I have understood that the board has been considering getting rid of Mobius and going to Evergreen. Well, Evergreen is a smaller service where NIXA would be the largest library, where Mobius has much larger libraries in its system. And I can tell you as a reader of older books that libraries often don't carry that Mobius is necessary. Also, it is not a cost-saving measure. If you wanted to save money, then you would get rid of Hoopla, not Mobius. Hoopla costs $7,000 a month. And it's limited. I don't know if any of you have tried to use it, but you can't get a whole series in because it limits how often you can check things out. Mobius is $13,000 annually. Now, I know, right now, Mobius is revamping and offline, which is means I have had to go to thrift books, and I don't like spending my money. So I would encourage the board to actually look at what is a cost-saving measure and what is not before you make a decision. Plus, you're limiting information by going to Evergreen instead of Mobius, and that's not really what a board trustees of a library should be doing. I'm done.
Reggie, you're up to speak, and Christopher, you're up next.
Good evening. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ted Bundy, Jeffrey Dombers, Chuck the Ripper, would all have to shake their head yes to what you had to say. If you checked out any of these men that were serial killers, I spoke one time on that. Every one of them started by a book that they found in an alley. And they read that book, they looked at the pictures until it did not fulfill anymore, and then they had to start committing the acts. And a number of innocent people was murdered because of it. People who thinks that these books have no effect on children. I mean, that is totally stupid. How in the world do you even find the floor when you get out of bed in the morning? I mean, it's nuts. Our whole life is affected by what we hear. We're here tonight because you heard there was going to be a board meeting. So you made the choice of whether or not you were going to be here. Children makes choices by things that they hear. That's why the Bible tells us, and again, as a pastor, I'm not ashamed of it, and I stand up for what the Word of God teaches. And we're to take heed what we hear. Pay attention to what you listen to. And I know some of you last month, at times, you want to bring in scriptures on love. Let me say something here. There's nobody that ever loved you any more than God does himself. But there's a lot today that's being said about love and acceptance. Jesus preached love and acceptance, but he didn't. He preached love and repentance. You show me one place in the Bible where he preached. Here's the bottom line. People don't want to go to hell when they die, but they don't want to repent of their sins. The Bible says that there are those, Jesus said, that with their mouth they'll worship me, but their heart is full from me. You can claim all you want to that you know God, you can claim to be a Christian, but you can't hide behind that. Jesus said, "By their fruits you shall know them." He said, "A good tree is not going to bring forth evil fruit." And he said, "Those that abuse themselves with mankind," which is this kind of lifestyle, he said, "they will not inherit the kingdom of heaven." Now, if you don't like it, take it up with him. God's the one who said it. But I'm going to tell you something, you need to make sure your sins will find you out. God loves you. Nobody ever loved you as much as he does, but you have to come his way, and you have to be willing to repent and turn from your wicked lifestyle before you'll ever receive Jesus as your Lord and Savior.
Christopher, you're up. Daniel, you're up next.
Can I go? Okay, I just came to speak today to talk about my concern when it comes to the appointment of board members. The following was said by the Christian County Presiding Commissioner Lynn Morris when it came to electing the current board trustees. We just thought that the best thing to do would be to start over again and see if we could find people that would work together with each other, compromise and listen to each other, not argue in the meetings like we've had in the past year and a half. And I've seen the complete opposite of that today, especially with the most recent leaving of Allison. The other concern too that came up was last month, there was a lawsuit against three of the members on the board currently for breaking two Sunshine laws and then breaking their own board bylaws when it came to who they were going to elect in different positions on the board. There is an email that was sent by, I hope it's pronounced Miss Brazil, where it said, "My hindsight tells me that we should wait until December to remove Allison, but I'm not to support retracting this election because it would convey weakness." The biggest weakness is not being able to acknowledge when you're wrong. And we're seeing time and time again, even with the most recent loss of a board member, that there is no compromise here, there's no hearing each other out. It's just take over what we can and then decide what's going to happen to the library. It's become so much more political than actually focusing on what the library is here to do, which is getting people passionate about reading books, learning other people's story, building empathy, all of those things. My other concern too is when it comes to conflicts of interest. So, one of the policies for libraries for conflicts of interest policy, Section 2, limiting potential conflicts of interest in decision-making. When Mr. Garrity was brought onto the board, one of the first things that was pointed out about him coming up on the board was that he was a pastor. And one of the things that it says in the bylaws is, "Members of the library board of trustees having a substantial personal or private interest in any policy, initiative, issue, or decision considered by the board shall disclose within the board minutes the nature of the trustee's interest and shall be disqualified from voting from any matters related to these interests." Once again, the Christian County Commissioner noted that Mr. Garrity was the first man on the board, and he also pointed out he's a pastor. When it comes to the pastor aspect, I feel like that's a really big concern when it comes to labeling books and deciding what can and can't be seen, because how many people we see quoting the Bible here every single day for reasons why we shouldn't be having LGBTQ books for the reason we should be labeling them. Thank you.
Christopher. Do you have any legal experience?
My grandparents own a law firm, so I've heard quite a bit, yes.
And I've read a book about lawyer once. I think you should do your homework. I'm not a pastor.
That's what it says on the thing. Sorry, I'm just quoting the Springfield Journal.
All right, Daniel, Larry, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. My first time being here. My name is Daniel, I'm a resident of Springfield. I came out tonight to speak in favor of the contested books tonight being moved out of the children's section of this library. One of my primary concerns among a few of these highlighted books is the exposure of children to concepts related to radical gender ideology. Focusing on the books Pink, Blue &amp; You and The Pronoun Book, both feature characters discussing their gender identity misaligning with their birth sex and the concept of the non-binary identity with the use of they/them pronouns, as well as touching on the topic of transgenderism, both in adults and in a very young child. I have a background in science, specifically in biology, and while my profession is not at all related to human anatomy and development, I consider it a great disservice to introduce such topics that are not only unsuitable for younger audience, but also ignore biological reality. Such complex and confusing topics like gender identity and gender dysphoria are not meant for children who are in the dawn of learning about the world, how to discern what is true and what is false. I do show sympathy to children and teenagers who are struggling with similar mental illnesses coinciding with an identity crisis. I find it more beneficial to their mental development and overall growth as a human for trusted adults to acknowledge what is biologically true and explore the psychological bases behind these feelings, rather than just jump straight into the subject matter and blindly affirm false realities. Another concern of mine is, within a few of the books highlighted, featured to the very young audience, Flamer, well, this graphic sexually explicit material frequently featured the young audience is currently advertised to. In this book, what I'm referring to, Flamer, How It All Blew Up, and Last Night at the Telegraph Club, all include such content. From detailed descriptions of sexual foreplay and explicit acts to extremely vulgar language between characters mixed with multiple uses of homophobic slurs, it is abundantly clear these books are not written for the eyes and mind of a child. Now, I want to make it very perfectly clear, I'm not in favor of banning these books. I've spoken out against tonight. I believe in free creative expression, and authors of these books have every right to do so as creators of literary art. I myself am also a gay man. It is okay for children to learn about homosexuality in a mature, responsible manner without exposing them to detailed graphic sexual acts between members of the same sex. All I'm asking for tonight is that these books be removed from the children's section and placed in the sections that are meant for an older, more mature audience based on the subject matter. Adults should still be fully allowed to check out these books, if they please. I just want to ensure children are safely kept away from this material. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public comment section. Thank you, everyone, for your commentary and respect. Appreciate that. So we'll move now to old business. We have our bylaw revision second reading as the first matter of old business. All right, so I can read through them again. Article 2 for our elections and appointments. The bylaw revision proposed to Section 1, currently proposed to read, "Officers of Christian County Library Board of Trustees shall be elected at least once a year at the July meeting, but may be elected at any open, regular, or special meeting. Such officers shall be president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer." Would the board like to discuss them individually, or do you want to read the second as well?
I have a comment about the first one.
Sure, please.
I disagree that they, I think it should be consistent that a person serve for a year if they are able to stay for the year. I don't think we should just be able to willy-nilly reelect people for different positions throughout the year. I fear for the consistency of the board's ability to function and it takes a month or two for people to kind of get up to speed. And if you just can, they're there for two months, and it's like put someone out, and you're there for three months and you take them out. I worry about the instability of the board. So I do not agree with that section, but may be elected at any open or regular or special meeting. I disagree with that.
I'd like to make a comment. As part of the bylaws, I think what people need to understand is, in the course of your lifetime, you may make a decision to not want to be the president or a treasurer or something like that. And the way the bylaws are written now, they're restrictive. I don't think they're restrictive in the sense, and we'll find out on October 30th when the judge makes his ruling. I think we are well within our rights to reelect people into different positions, and that's kind of what this bylaw does. We need to be able to do it as a self-governing board. We need to be able to nominate people at any time at a regular meeting or a closed meeting such that it coincides with their life events, their decision to occupy those roles as long as they're nominated and voted in by the majority of the board. That's the way most boards operate. I don't know how many boards you all have been on, but I've been on a few. This is the way it needs to operate so that we can have the right person in the right job as they accept being in that job and they have a majority voting them in that job. So I say we accept this revision as stated.
Would you like to make that a motion?
Is there any other discussion?
Is there any other, well, if you'd like to make a motion, you're allowed, and then we could discuss your motion.
I make a motion that we, I move that we accept this bylaw revision as stated.
Article 2, Section 1. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
I think we had to.
We had any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Nay.
All right, hearing majority, motion carries. We'll go ahead and read also from Article 2, Elections and Appointments, Section 7. Proposed to rewrite written as, "Christian County Library Board of Trustees shall follow the Christian County Commission process for appointment and reappointment of members to the library board in accordance with the Missouri State statute title 11-182.050. Qualified citizens interested in serving should review the Christian County Commission website or contact their office for details." So any discussion on that proposed change?
How does that revision echo, I'm sorry, I'm...
Previously, it had stated that the library board would propose to the commissioners potential candidates, and this brings us into alignment with the process that changed in 2022.
I was going to say, this is what I'm familiar with.
Yeah, our bylaws are out of date, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions, or would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to adopt Section 7.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
So just let me clarify. So the people who apply to be on the board of trustees, taken upon themselves, anyone in the community, to contact the county commission to apply for that position. The board has no say on who applies, who doesn't apply. This is strictly up to an individual and the Christian County Commission. Is that correct?
Yeah, we left it as qualified citizens because the commissioners do currently state what those requirements are, but you're right, there wouldn't be people involved in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarification or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we can move to a vote. Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, those were the two bylaw revisions. The next item on old business is catalog type updates.
So Diana, you had asked about this for the tags that are in the catalogs. So I couldn't find an actual list of any related to LGBTQ materials. Like you can search for specific tags and find them, but there are, I did find 184 million tags, and they are user-generated kind of continuously through a third party. So they're sort of unwravelable for if we wanted to use them.
Sounds kind of like hurting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So if you have any other questions about the subject headings that we discussed last month or any other features, just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you. The next item on old business is resource sharing software update.
Yes.
Also originally.
So this is related to Mobius and resource sharing that we've talked about a couple different times in the past couple of months. Several things have happened in the last month that have clarified sort of a couple of different paths. So number one, we had talked before about whether or not Mobius would give us any financial consideration due to the downtime, and they'll be able to give us, we pay once for our annual membership fee, and they're going to be able to give us a full refund of that for the year and still retain our membership in Mobius. So number one, there's been some development just in the last week that some things have been functioning better than they were. So there's some hope for a possibility of going live, but there's nothing concrete. So I don't know when and if, what that would look like, so I'm not counting on anything specific. There are some, a roadmap for some specific functions that would be ideal for us to have even when things are working before we go live that are not going to be out until January at a minimum. So my guess is it would be January before we could go live. So in the meantime, I've been looking at alternatives and talking with some other public libraries that are on the same C R software that we are within Mobius. And we currently use a product called OCLC for what we call traditional interlibrary loan, which is kind of like most public libraries and academic libraries in the country use this piece of software. And they use it to do interlibrary loan in the absence of a consortium like Mobius. So we've still been using that all along the way. It's just not the same easy user experience that Mobius is. But we have some ability to reconfigure that for our patrons to make it a better user experience. So that's the path I'm planning to start working on, like immediately. It involves kind of making live a backend database that we've used where people can search, just like they did in Mobius, and find the materials that they're looking for and put a request in that would then come to our staff, and then staff do the same backend processes of requesting directly from libraries as opposed to like Mobius when those requests go straight to the lending library. So it will be more streamlined for the patron and more similar to what they were used to seeing with Mobius, but a little bit streamlined for staff, but still more work than Mobius processes were. But we should be able to do that with no additional cost. Although they do have, OCLC does have another product that we can add on at a cost that would make the user experience and the staff experience a lot more like Mobius. Not quite as nice and seamless, but better. So my thought is to do the basic configuration that's no cost to those improvements as soon as possible. Get us through the next few months, see how things go with Mobius the next few months, and then if things aren't looking promising for the future for Mobius, then we could use what we're spending on Mobius to pay for the additional module essentially from OCLC to do resource sharing.
What would the OCLC cost be?
It is, I don't have a specific quote, but it is around $7,000 is what they.
Should be about half of what Mobius is costing us.
It's, our membership is around $11,000, and we pay a courier on top of that, and we would still need to pay for the courier to move the materials.
So you're talking about a $4,000 plus savings?
Two or $3,000, I think. And it actually, OCLC gives us actually more access to libraries than Mobius does. It just, it takes more work still on the staff side, so it's not as seamless as Mobius. But it would, there's one public library in Mobius that's actually looking at implementing that extra module from OCLC and then still staying with Mobius when it is up and going and using both. I don't know that that's viable for us financially or even that we have that much of a need for it, but it is.
Okay, so you say it's a little bit more work for the library staff, but it would not be a complete overhaul of our software?
Correct, yes. It's actually, like, it won't change the processes that they do now, and it actually improves one of them. It's more work than Mobius processes.
But it's not the cost and the retraining cost.
Right, it doesn't change our core software circulation.
That was a great concern to me.
Yeah, it's just the resource sharing.
Because taking a bit more time to use something that they're, can be familiar with versus retraining every single staff member and redoing all the computer systems and all the I T work would end up not being cost-effective and not friendly in any case. So thank you for that information.
Any other questions? My plan is to proceed with this unless you have objections. We can revisit it at any time because I won't be committing to adding on a new piece of software or a new membership or changing anything like that.
What was, I apologize if you said it and I didn't hear it. What was the anticipated timeline for you to do this with whatever configuration? To make the temporary switch?
I don't know for sure. My hope is within a month, we can get a public experience. Like, we won't be able to promote it widely. We'll have to do some backend, but maybe a soft launch of it, I think, would be my best description.
And contractually, are there any, are they able to sort of do a month to month knowing that we're doing this as a trial?
The course that I'm, the configuration changes won't be an additional cost. It's included in what we already contract with for OCLC. It's just, it's some processes that we've just never used before because we've had Mobius. And because having two different, like, catalogs that people search from could be confusing, so we just focused on Mobius.
So no change in cost or contract?
Correct.
I have a question. So on the Mobius website, and I had mentioned this to you before, they have a list of features, one through five. Would it be possible for us to get a copy of that? Just what those features are and what the proposed timeline is for the release of those features? Oh, and last thing with regard to Mobius. You had said something about there would be a refund of fee for the downtime. Was that affirmed? Was that affirmed?
You said we had a full refund authorized. Is that for prior year?
For year. It is for like 20, 24 to 25.
Okay, so this.
Okay.
So if it is up and live and going well, you know, February, and we want to go on, then we can talk about prorating the remainder of the year.
Okay.
Any other discussion on resource sharing and software? All right, thank you, Renee. All right, the next item on old business is review of legal counsel. I had brought this item onto the agenda, so from a Roberts rules perspective, would the board like me to temporarily give someone else the interim presidency so that I can make the discussion a motion?
No, I think you can do it as a present.
Yeah.
Roberts rules also allows me to change, so I don't know what the preference was up for.
Yeah.
Okay, me go. All right, so then for the review of legal counsel, I'll start, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'd like to motion to provide 30 days' written notice to terminate our agreement of legal services with the Styron Law Firm dated 10/1/2017.
Boo.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
Can you restate it, please?
Sure. Motion to provide 30 days' written notice to terminate our agreement of legal services with the Styron Law Firm that was dated 10/1/2017.
Okay, are you planning to replace legal counsel?
Certainly would need to.
From an operational standpoint, it would be helpful to have an attorney. In our RFP process, a request for proposal process is typically what's used for attorney, and that could take longer than 30 days. So it is up to you guys, but it might be helpful to retain another attorney first.
We have.
Do this?
We have.
Or pending.
From what I understand, Mo perm covers us for, if we were to enter into another lawsuit?
What was the term?
Mo perm.
Their liability insurance.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be without legal representation, but Diane.
I think if we put out a notice or, you know, publish a notice that we're seeking applicants for legal counsel, I mean, I would suggest contacting the Springfield Bar Association and putting a notice there that we're seeking, you know, basically seeking applicants or seeking bids, and find out who is interested and who has experience in this in, basically in municipal law and library law and sunshine law. I, you know, I have already heard that there are some who are interested who would probably respond to that.
If you could send me their names, then I could.
I will do that tomorrow. It'll be an email.
The municipal law, sunshine law, what else?
I agree.
Library first.
Thank you.
The library law's a little more specialized, so there are not as many people who are expert in that. But there are quite a, there are a number of firms in Springfield who do a lot of basically law regarding public entities who are, you know, who are capable of doing that.
And as we get deeper into that discussion, I have some thoughts on sort of the RFP timeline as well that I have, so we can continue that discussion.
May I ask why you're making this proposal?
I found it recently unclear to determine who Mr. Styron is representing.
I think he's created a lot of conflicts of interest. His contract is with the library board, but he's alternatively representing some board members against other board members, ostensibly representing the library district. And it's to me, I've practiced law for 27 years, and I've represented clients that are entities. I've represented, like, for instance, married couples. And when you are representing an entity, it's not appropriate to, if they, if members of your entity enter into a dispute, you can't pick sides and represent one faction against the other. The appropriate thing to do is to withdraw from the representation rather than pick sides and insert oneself into the middle of the dispute.
Other discussion on the motion?
From a timeline perspective, how would you like me to proceed with creating an RFP? And how would that work with a 30 days' notice?
Yeah, if we want to vote on this, then I think the next motion would need to be to proceed with an RFP in a 30-day process, so.
As soon as you're able to do it.
Is there any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
I just, there was a requirement for written notice, so yeah, we draft that.
Yeah.
Okay, no.
And that's from tomorrow for the minutes? Is that right? Does this is tomorrow?
If we're voting, I think the vote would be effective immediately. Provide written notice mailed tomorrow. Any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
I think I have to abstain.
All right, motion carries. All right, so I think the second portion then of this agenda item is. Yeah, she's got one. Okay. Is the RFP process to retaining new legal counsel within that 30 days' time. So I drafted very much a draft. Please feel free to give me feedback, but I think we would need to then make a motion to proceed forward with the RFP-type process across the next 30 days. So we can certainly talk through this, and I think at the conclusion of that discussion, we'll take a vote to move forward with this, so. I think that there's certainly the steps, Renee, that we would look to your support to posting the advertisement of a potential availability. As Diana mentioned, with some specific focus on the library law needs that our board will have, posting that description, for instance, on the Missouri Bar Association, the Springfield Bar Association sites. I provided information there since we have a very short timeline. I tried to do as much research as possible. And then I think the board for a calendar availability would certainly need to do our best to make ourselves available, to have meetings, to review those applications and meet with those potential candidates. Sorry, there's a bug flying on my face. And certainly be able to score those conversations within a rubric so that we're able to make a decision with full transparency to the public and then announce that decision at our next regular meeting. So I'm certainly open to feedback or any changes in this potential process. I don't have 27 years in law, but I'm a project manager, so.
I know some other libraries that have recently done an RFP for attorneys. Like, there's probably a template that I could use to, like, plug in what, you know, you guys want to specify and then post it if you want to make the specifications, and I can kind of plug that in, or it's up to you.
Is it, are you comfortable with the timeline?
I think it'll be tied. And I, I don't.
You can do it, though?
To schedule meetings for the week of November 11th.
I will not be available the 11th through the 17th.
And we have the board meeting a week early next month, so it's, then we. It's.
19th.
19th. Yeah, it's the following week is Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I tried to work backward from that, so that was my final line in the announcement, 11/19.
I mean, we could potentially do meetings via Zoom. I, you know, that would be accessible.
Well, be off the planet.
Okay.
That we, that won't be near as soon.
Okay, thank you.
I will be out of, totally out of, I'll be out of.
Okay. We think it might depend upon the number of candidates. If there's one or two, we might as well squeeze them in.
If you can, if we can receive their credentials, their resumes, CVs, drop them into a shared Google Drive, then we can all kind of just peruse them individually and come to, to bring feedback.
I could access a PDF on an email, and I could provide, the day I would get it would be extremely late in the evening, that I would be able to respond, but I would be able to respond in a 24-hour period to email. extremely late in the evening, that I would be able to respond, but I would be able to respond within a 24 hour period to email PDF. That's all I'll have.
Does this have enough information of what we're trying to accomplish with Renee's additional specification, or with Renee's additional potential template that we could follow Diana's specifications? And then where to potentially post this, posting?
Since I'm the one often helping to schedule, is there a reason why you couldn't do the interviews once Janice gets back that week? I mean, the board meeting is the 19th, but if you're having special meetings anyway, couldn't you do them that, that week, that same week of the 19th? I'm just curious.
I think my only preference would be that we don't go outside of the 30 day window, so you're absolutely right, we can call a special meeting.
Right, because the 20, yeah, the 22nd is today, so, I mean, you have the 8th. You said you're gone through the 17th, Jan?
Goodness, specify.
Sorry.
I will be gone the 11th and I will arrive back on the 17th.
So that entire week of the 18th, you guys, potentially, because the 22nd is Friday, so, I mean, if you're trying to get it 30 days from today. I, just, you don't have to do that, I'm just saying, scheduling wise.
But we could have all of the candidates assembled by then.
Absolutely.
So when we meet, we'd be able to vote. Does that work?
Yeah, I'd be happy to get together on the 18th or early on the 19th, whatever you needed of me, I just apologize.
No, that's good. So I would like to make a motion then that we move forward with a 30 day timeline for RFP process as we've discussed here tonight with the flexibility of when we will have the final decision, but appreciate Janice's flexibility, so that, that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Diana, any discussion on the motion for RFP? All right, hearing none, move to a vote on RFP. Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now moving to new business, we have our December board meeting scheduled, Renee?
So as I share with you an email, I have a personal conflict with that, the 17th is when it's scheduled. So that is also a week early due to the holidays, so if there is another day we can do it, that week, that would be ideal and helpful.
So it's still the weekend of 16th, but it's not on the 17th?
It's not Tuesday night, yeah.
CCL is on the 18th. But Monday, the 16th?
And we can send it tentatively on the 16th. If, double check and if you find you have a conflict, let me know, but we'll post it on the website, because we have, for a regular meeting, we have to post it publicly and.
So same time, same location?
Yes.
But on the 16th of December.
Did you check the meeting rooms by chance, or?
I didn't, but we'll make it work.
Okay.
Last year we did that too. Someone else, another trustee had a conflict, somebody last year too.
Thank you.
Next, that's all for the December meeting, right?
Yes.
Next item of new business is open, opening meetings with pledge allegiance. John, I believe this was your item?
Yeah, I just, I just thought it would be good as, as Americans to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, it's something that brings us together, I think. If you don't want to be an American, you can always leave America.
That's good.
At least now you can, I don't know how it'll be in 10 years, but I, I just think that it's a good thing for us all to stand and pledge allegiance to, to the flag. At the beginning of meetings, we say we open with a pledge allegiance.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion?
It, I believe in America, stood up and set a pledge of allegiance all my life. I, I just am concerned about crossing that with the public library system. We have many people who are not citizens, who may be here on visas or for other reasons are, maybe have dual visas. Nothing against America, nothing against my values, my right to vote, my right to say the pledge, but I'm, I'm not sure that it's appropriate to have to instill that at the beginning of our library board meetings.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote on the motion for opening the meetings with pledge allegiance. Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item of new business. Next item of new business is formal request for updated organizational chart and job descriptions. John, that was also your agenda item?
Excuse me, you skipped.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I? I'm so sorry, yes, the next item was providing copies of all Harry Styron's opinions to public record and board packets. John, was that your idea?
Yeah, that was mine, I, I know there's a lot of sunshine requests and we're not trying to keep people busy doing sunshine requests. I think if, if we have a lawyer and he gives us a legal opinion, you all paid for that opinion, you should have access to it.
That's true.
And whether it's for what I want or what somebody else wants, it doesn't matter, it's a paid for legal opinion by the taxpayers, it should be public record, so.
And board packets?
Board packets, yeah.
Would you like to make that a motion?
I would like to make that a motion, that we, we make public records in board packets. All of Harry Styron's opinions to public record and board packets.
I have a question just for record keeping, to clarify which ones, like.
Whatever ones haven't been released, we want to release them.
Okay, so there's some emails that he sent as well as legal opinions, like in the closed meeting for from December and I just want to make sure I do have the right records.
So let me make this as simple as I can. It looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, whenever, whenever he renders a legal opinion, he attaches a letter with, it's kind of like a sign thing.
Right.
So those are the ones.
Those are the ones, okay.
And should we modify this as not just his, but whoever our legal counsel is going forward?
Yeah, that would be good, huh?
Do, from an attorney's opinion, do you think any attorney would have issue with that? I mean, it's your, your privilege, your.
I think the only exception would be pending litigation, right?
Yeah, I think, I think that probably would, and I think that's probably when, when we get to the point where we're interviewing potential candidates for new legal counsel, we probably ought to bring that up with them and and make sure that's something they're comfortable with.
But did I hear you say there's an exception for pending litigation, like if he's giving you legal advice?
Well, under sunshine law, if there's pending legal action, the, that's our legal counsel. The lawyer isn't going to talk to the public about how he's going to defend the library.
And that would also implicate privilege and work product, or work product privilege, attorney client privilege, so yeah, that's, I think pending litigation would be an exception to that.
So like we had received legal, legal opinion on labeling the books, so that was not related to.
We're not under any litigation right now for that, so that could be released.
You received legal memos from Harry regarding current litigation, so would that be included or not? And it was, it happened sort of before the fact, so.
I think we have to wait till after the 30th on some of those, what do you think, Diana?
Yeah, I think we probably should, I think that's, that's kind of a.
It's an open.
So are there specific ones right now that you've received that you know you would like to be made public and you could maybe start there?
One that he just sent us about the labeling and then the memo he did a couple of months ago about.
June, was it the June?
The one, yeah, the summary that he did about where he'd done research on on options.
Removing books from the library or on.
I think that was.
Yeah, I know it was a few months ago, but I don't remember exactly when it was.
I think I know which one it was.
Then there was the December 23 about our trustees' roles according to state statutes, yeah. Those are the three that come to it.
Yeah, but we kind of saw a little opinion on, and it didn't have anything to do with any opinion litigation.
Okay.
So do we need to restate that?
I think it would be helpful to, to state the specific things.
And that's, it's not just Harry, we're seeing all legal counsel opinions, any, any contract legal opinion, contracted legal opinion. So I would be going forward as Diana said, as well.
And this includes advice he's, a potential lawyer is giving you, not just like a written memo? I just feel like there's a lot of possibilities of what this could include and we just want to make sure we're doing the right thing to protect you guys, that's what.
I would say maybe going forward, if we're, if we're seeking advice on a particular topic, then we need to ask our legal counsel to reduce that to the form of a memorandum and then a memorandum or a letter or something in writing. And then we can take that and put that in the board packet and release it to the public.
Makes sense.
That sounds perfect.
And then my final question would be about the board, which board packet are we talking about here? Am I going, or we will take these and I put it retroactively in this month's board packet? I mean, going forward, you're saying as it happens, but these three, the, the labeling, the one about potential legal.
I think one of them we already voted or released, didn't we?
Yes.
We did.
Uh huh, the, the one about removing and labeling and current precedent about how that could go.
So it's only two, is that?
And then the one from the trustee roles in December.
Yeah, I don't think. What makes sense to include as a part of November's packet?
I mean, you do have this agenda item, so I haven't posted the public packet, I could just get those two from the record and put them.
Into this packet?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
But you're, you're saying just those memos, not any kind of back and forth emails that you have that come across? Thanks, I just wanted to know what to put in the papers.
I appreciate it, Tori. Do we already have a motion for this? Sorry.
Yeah.
All right, yes, we have a motion and a second, Diana, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion as Tori has it captured?
Wait, Diana, you were the second?
Yes. Hearing no further discussion, move to a vote. Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our third item of new business that John proposed, formal request for updated organizational chart and job descriptions.
I think this is just to further clarify and understand how things run and who does what, and I'd appreciate having that.
Yeah, I'll be providing an updated organizational chart next month with the budget along with a base scale. And then I'm in the process of updating several job descriptions, my goal is to have those all done by the end of the year. Would it be most helpful if I just send those all when they're complete, which would be December or early January? I can send what I have now if you prefer, or just wait till they've all been updated.
So the job descriptions are going to take longer, is that true?
I, I have a few that I'm in the process of updating right now, I mean, I have a set that I could send, but if you want the most current ones, it'll be December.
Okay, so I've got December for what you have, or for job descriptions as they are today, right?
I can send the job descriptions as they are today within the next month, in November.
Okay, are they accurate? Are they, do they, are they not doing what the job description says?
They're just not updated language, there's a few that we've tweaked that because of new position changes over the last year, so they're somewhat outdated, yes.
Okay, well, I prefer to have them when they're updated.
Yes, okay.
So that, what about the org chart?
November's meeting.
November?
So org chart, November, updated job descriptions, December? Is that agreeable?
What date, November and December, I hate to be specific, but I really do want to be specific.
Would it not be at the board meetings?
I don't necessarily have to, it doesn't necessarily have to be part of the board meeting.
Why don't we say the 15th and the 15th, November 15th and November 15th and December 15th?
Is that feasible? And then how do you propose to receive this information, John?
Drop it in the Google Drive, please, and just send an email out. I suppose at some point it'll hit the webpage, right? People want to know.
The org chart, we haven't posted it there before.
Would you like to make that a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that the updated org chart gets posted and the job descriptions once they're, they're completed. November 15th and December 15th, tentatively.
Posted to the website?
Posted to the website. Is that, is that possible? Can we do that?
We've never done it before, we don't really have a place for it.
Maybe if you had it as a part of the meeting, we could put it in the packet.
And then it would be in.
And that would solve your date problem, you'd have to preset dates, I don't, I'm just trying to help you out, I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not so concerned about the job descriptions, I would like to see the org chart on the website.
Okay, I'll, I'll work on that.
You could put in the policy, Nanyo.
Yeah, that's true.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Hearing motion and a second, is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, move to a vote to have the org chart posted to the website or build a place into the policy, is that an either or? I apologize, I didn't write it down.
On, on the website.
On the website, thank you. Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item of new business, the 2025 preliminary budget.
Okay, so I bring this every October, the full budget with lots of details will be next month, this is just sort of showing you the path I'm on compared to this year and what I'm looking at for next year, so just to kind of hit the highlights. We're doing good with budget projections for this year overall, both in income and expenditures, so I believe we'll come in under expected budget expenditures for the year, partly due to, mostly due to personnel and some position changes there and a little bit of operating expense. And you can see the, the year to date budget in the financials of the consent agenda, kind of give them more detail about each category and where we are in that. So our overall revenue increases are expected to be approximately 3% increase in property tax, which is typical for a non-assessment year, and that's almost entirely due to rebuilding, new construction and property tax assessments from that, so that is about a 3% increase and the other income that we receive, the carryover slash bond reimbursement is the amount of funds that were unspent in the certificate of participation that we used to build Clever and Sparta that are helping pay down the, the annual bill for that financing, so we just have to mark it because it's not coming in as revenue, it's sort of sitting in a savings account, sort of speak, so to speak, although that's not the right financial term, so that's where that money is designated as income because we have to designate it there in order to spend it. The fines and copier fees, I'm keeping at about $30,000, which is less than what we were projecting to receive this year, but that's always kind of a little bit of a guesswork in how much, and that's not, that's fines, that's copier fees, fax fees, that's the rent we get from the Missouri State Highway Patrol and a few other odds and ends that come in there. State aid, I always budget conservatively because that is not voted on until mid, our mid fiscal year, so we receive half, so we know now what we'll receive in the first two quarters of 2025, but we don't know what we'll receive in the second two quarters, so I try to estimate that really just based upon what we know we'll receive and then if we get more, great. And then I budgeted or planned on right now a little bit less for grants, donations, reimbursements, there's several reasons for why we don't really have the ability to bring in a lot of grants. There's several reasons for why we don't really have the ability to bring in a lot of grants. A lot of the state grants are technology related and we've kind of done most of what we can do through state grants recently. Plus, we don't have a ton of capacity to implement grants. It'd be great to get grants for facilities maintenance and stuff, but that, those are just harder to get and, and none of the state funding is eligible for that kind of expenditure. So I've just budgeted, planned on budgeting that a little bit lower and then kept our interest income conservative as well. The bulk of what are that 3% increase from property taxes, I'm trying to put into personnel, into wages, primarily because depending upon November's vote, we could have a minimum wage increase January 1st. That will affect our staff, so I'm working on trying to increase staff wages and do as much as I can across the board to avoid compression, but there will be a little bit of compression there. And then kind of keeping collection about the same, we try to put a little bit more in that for, I mean, our digital usage is always increasing, people love their digital materials, so we try to manage that moderately. And then sort of maintaining the operating expenditures fairly similarly. So this is just a rough outline, these specific numbers will look different. I will have all the categories that you see in the year to date budget. So if there's something specific that you know right now or you want more detail on next month, you can let me know, or if you think about it in the next week or two, if you will send me an email with like, have some, you know, explanation of these particular budget items that'll help me prepare for what to bring next month. Any questions about that? It's pretty similar to this year's budget, nothing wildly different, so.
Just the breakdown on the maintenance items and any cap, and any large capital investments that we will have for end of life equipment? So that we can forecast for that.
Thank you for the preview of coming interactions. Any other questions for Renee on the 2025 preliminary budget? Appreciate your efforts there. Next item on the new business is 2025 interim director and understudy equipments.
This is a routine annual thing per policy. This is the hit by the bus flash when the lottery policy.
You're going to go with the lottery?
Yes, yeah, that would be great. So basically if I'm incapacitated for a significant period of time or leave or whatever, the interim, interim director is already designated and has some training and, and information to be able to kind of step into the role and just keep, keep the bus moving. So that for next year will be Dana Roberts, and that's who it was this year, and then the understudy, so that there's like two layers there, is, is Tori Pegram for the understudy. So in the event that like illness or whatever, hopefully nothing terrible will happen, Dana has the capacity to step into that and then work with you guys to kind of figure out the path forward.
Any questions for Renee on that? Alright, the last item on new business was lawsuit, and we can go ahead and table that item for today. So that is the end of our agenda and I move to adjourn.
Are you tabling it? Tabling means save it for another meeting, or are you just, there's no action taken, just so if you table, you have to say till a future date?
We're going to table it to a, so you want a motion to table?
No, I just need to put in the minutes. If it's being tabled, it has to be. I don't know.
It's
It's premature.
It is premature to be able to put a future date on it, it may not be applicable by November, so.
Gotcha, so just table to a future date. Gotcha.
Alright, with that, I move to adjourn.
Thank you.